You know.
I had a request to not do the fighting. But have Nick thing that. There within the. Let's see what he said. I don't see the writing on the page. They're not for calling together. I. To. Okay. Stay.
I'm Grant.
Here.
Jamie Melkey.
Here.
Kathy Mitchell.
Here.
When you read.
Here.
Do you have a board?
You should like to come in. Come in. I'm in the agenda or lives.
May I make the motion to approve the agenda?
I moved your agenda. I'll sign it in.
What's your main second? All of the papers say I.
All right.
What's it good? Or do residents serve around city council?
Need improvement in seven candle.
I finished the bills.
Hmm.
I finished the bills.
Okay, good. Okay. We we do, we don't need to approve the consent again.
Okay. Really good.
Nick, I I think you wanted the bills to be approved so we might win it. So July.
Yeah, because they'll all be late.
Hey, move to a perfect second, John. A second.
Kathy Mitchell.
Yes.
Jamie Melky.
Yes.
I'm Graham.
Yes.
When do we? If we carry.
To the council.
All right, so we're all here, the the one thing that was on the agenda, well, there's two things, but the one thing for the discussion I know. Is to appoint a resident to city council. Michael Berman resigned in June and of course council at that time decided to accept applications to the. For people who'd like to serve on council, we collected those applications through. June twenty six Thursday and they received applications, those names are there on the. On the screen, we did receive one individual who submitted their application on Monday, I did inform them that they that application came in late. But so yet we have ten people that applied on time. We also have. At the council meeting, I was not at council members had asked for an evaluation sheet to to score and rank. The applicants as well as they asked for the members to be. That applicants to be invited to this meeting to be able to speak during this agenda item, I did send out invitation asking them if they wanted to, they could come. And speak up to three minutes, I said up to three minutes because that's public comment time, of course, counsel can. Can choose to alter that for the applicants, but. They could do that up council, you can have them ask them to speak. Once I'm done going through this memo or when you would like, so. The charter simply requires that council, a council member makes a motion to appoint someone to. To council needs to be seconded and approval by a majority of you, so three of you. Of course, you guys can choose. To. You know, extend that process by going through the applicant's names. Discussing each applicant. That's up to you, but the charters, that's what the charter requires. I don't know if you guys fill out your score sheets or not, but you can also go through those if you want to. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd hand it back to you, we do have, I think, several of those, not all of the members who apply.
Do you like to speak?
Here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And maybe Jenkins. And. Um, I would be honored to serve as a temporary sixth community for sixty one years, I've been an official full time resident for four. Over the past year and a half, I've regularly attended the planning commission and city council meetings, so. I'm up to date on decisions that are lying ahead and and the challenges. I'm I've also contributed to the discussions when appropriate, and I would be honored to contribute at a greater level. For the upcoming time that is needed. I currently serve on the zoning board of appeals, CBA. I understand Harbor Springs in the community very well, because I have friends who are full time residents in Harbor, and I know many, many others who are in the surrounding. Associations. I was an operations manager for proprietary trading firm on the floor of the Chicago Board of Trade for thirty years and. For those years, they provided me a strong foundation of experiences such as problem solving. Or it's organizational skills, finance, leadership, all that are relevant to. The city council service. I would be honored to serve the city of Harbor Springs and its residents as an interim council member, and I thank you. For your opportunity today.
Thank you, Jenny. Nancy.
Nancy Randell. First, thanks for giving me the opportunity and considering me for an interim position on council. Many of you know me, so I'm not. I have been a voter here in the city of Harbor Springs since nineteen eighty. And this has, I've been here for almost all of my adult life. I have worked here, volunteered here, raised our kids in this community, and it's been my home for three months. I did serve on council for four years. In that time, I missed one regular meeting. And I was always on time and always very well prepared for any of the business we were talking about. I had an excellent working relationship with my fellow council members and the city staff. Both of which I think are very important elements to serving my city in a cooperative and well informed way. Running the city certainly is a team effort. While I was on council, I also served on the tree board and I served on the planning commission. And I attended many, many other board and commission meetings. And I believe it's important to have a good understanding of all the city business. Since coming off council, I have continued to attend in person almost every city council, planning commission, harbor commission, and many other committees. I've stayed very current on the business going on. It was not always easy to serve on council. We did not always agree. And we certainly had some challenges. But we worked with respect and consideration for our fellow council members and staff. And to make the best decisions for the city of Harbor Springs as a whole. One other comment, I'm sure some of you know our properties on the market, so I want to assure you that if I am chosen, I would definitely be staying with this. Thanks.
Yeah, nice. Gary.
Good afternoon. I'm Gary Stewart, I live at one on one at Easy Street in the city of Harbor Springs. I think there are probably three areas that I bring to the conversation today. One is a long history and passion for the city of Harbor Springs, I grew up in the Detroit area, but I came up here as a high school kid to go skiing. And then got married at the Presbyterian Church here, have family here. Was here through the year and then through the years and then twelve years ago retired. From BP in Chicago and then moved into Harbor Springs where I have been here full time ever since. I I think that I have a great passion. And history for Harbor Springs, which is kind of area number one. I think the second thing I bring to the table is I'm a good listener. You can't teach high school and do various things I've done without being a good listener, especially junior high. I was a teacher at Harbor Springs High School in the late seventies, so I think I would bring that to the table. Another area is I know quite a bit about government. And what makes government efficient? My work through thirty two years in the energy industry was in legislative work, community affairs, news media, relations, that kind of thing. I have some pretty well developed ideas about sort of Republican government with a small R, the way Plato talked about it in the Republic. Where you hire. Smart people. To legislate. And then after clear legislation is made. You support a good executive branch in our staff, and we have an excellent staff in the city. To do the work as legislated by council. So that's the model that I would be encouraging. As a candidate for the city council, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Linda.
Even with the rockets, I live on East Third Street. I have been here full time for thirty years. And what I bring to the city is a vast. A lot of experience in what goes on here, I was on the board of the food pantry when it originally became the food pantry after the. Methodist church started it. And I was on at the time that we moved it to Holy Childhood to the basement and. That was an experience that. That got me involved in all kinds of fundraising and and. Communication and I. I'm born of the of the friendship center when Presbyterian villages decided to tear the buildings down and put a new building out. But that was a challenge, the seniors had been. How is in other places for almost a year? And once again, it was that that was a challenging one. I've served on other committees, I've been on the board of reviews for at least twelve years, I've kind of forgotten how long, so I'm very familiar with. The the roads and the streets and the people and what happened, so. What the reason I apply is I really do have a single mission, and that is to bring the community back together. We've had some friction, I'm a bridge builder, I think I could reach out to everyone and listen and that's my goal. Thanks.
Thank you, Linda. Chip.
Good afternoon, my name is Chip Everest and I live in Four Beach Drive. It'd be a privilege for me to be appointed by the city council to fill my embarrassing seat. And I believe that I have the understanding, experience and disposition. Necessary to serve this special community. I've been a summer resident here my entire life and. My wife Gail and I decided to retire here six years ago. We deeply care for this place. And it is home for us. Currently, I serve various local nonprofits, either through board work or simply volunteering. I'm on the boards of the Lyric Theater and Harbor Hall Foundation. I'm co senior warden at St. John's Episcopal Church here in Harbor Springs. And I volunteer regularly and manage a truck driver for the Food for Kids program as well as being an innkeeper for the EMI project, Home Shelter. As a public service, I currently serve on the planning commission and I was previously on the Harvard Commission. For my career, I co founded several energy and environmental companies where I was always served as CFO. And over the years, I attribute a lot of our success to my fiscal responsibility. At CFO, I have borrowed large sums of money on Wall Street. And I'm proud to say that I have paid every penny of it back. I'm used to resolving tough and contentious issues through being a thoughtful voice of reason. I was the co founder of Energy Solutions, which is a nuclear decommissioning business. Being in the nuclear business was challenging, to say the least. But I learned to listen to all the factions. And to diffuse a lot of situations. Our company was actually involved in the removal of the big rock point power plant across the bay. I think I have the time, the skills and the passion to serve, it would be a privilege, thanks.
Thank you, Jim. John.
Good afternoon, my name is John Leo, I live at five ten West Summit Street. Been a full time resident for twelve years, a voter. I don't have anything to add to the information that I provided on my. Applications, but you all know me at this point. You have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, John. No.
That's all, everybody, I think we all recognize that we have an embarrassment of riches in terms of talent and people who are passionate about Harbor Springs. Every one of us. Is here to do whatever we feel is in the best interest of the community. I don't have a lot to say other than. I would take a similar approach. To what I've always done at the Harvard Commission where and serving for a number of decades. Which is to balance competing interests. We have a finite amount of real estate. And there's only so many things we can do, and there's all kinds of things that people want to do, and one of the challenges of. That the council faces is how to balance. What we have. What we want, which way we want to go, that sort of thing. That's about all I'm gonna say, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Mayor Graham, council people. Good afternoon. My name is Bob Buckner, I live at one forty eight West Bay Street. And I've been a primary, that's been my primary residence for the last ten years. About a month ago, I got a call from Mayor Graham informing me about Michael Vermin's plans to resign. And asking me if I'd be interested in filling that seat. I asked for twenty four hours to think about it a little bit, but I've always been very civic minded. I've served on the noise control committee. I volunteer as a poll worker, and that's been for the last several elections, as Nick knows. I currently serve on the zoning board of appeals and also the Harbor Springs Planning Commission. And after a day's reflection, I concluded that if Harbor Springs needed me to fill Michael's, go in as Michael's replacement, I'd be honored to do so. Beyond my service on multiple Harbor Springs committees, I think there are some key factors that make me qualified. Number one, objectivity. I think my conduct at the planning commission and on ZBA meetings is a strong testimony to my objectivity and my willingness to collaborate and work together. Number two, zoning ordinance, I think the zoning ordinance is going to be a heavy lift, a significant hurdle for this city in twenty twenty five. I am fully up to date on where we've been. In terms of the development of the current draft of the zoning ordinance. And I also have a good vision in terms of where I think we ought to be going. And it's our our goal to develop an ordinance that's going to be successful and acceptable to the year round residents as well as seasonal residents. If I do say so myself, I've always been a pretty hard worker, I put myself through college. Think my conduct at planning commission meetings and at the ZBA meetings reflects my willingness to put in the hard work and to be prepared. And finally, I think my professional career could make me uniquely qualified. I was the global vice president of predictive analytics for MAP Info Corporation. In that capacity, I was responsible for over two hundred predictive analytics professionals and over two million dollars worth of predictive analytics revenue. We had offices in Ann Arbor, San Francisco, Newport Beach, Raleigh, Albany, as well as internationally in Toronto, Windsor, England and Sydney, Australia. And we developed site selection and sales forecasting tools for models and models for retailers, restaurants, banks, service providers, particularly any business where location, demography, accessibility. Could possibly impact performance. This is important because in my role as that person, the VP of Global Predictive Analytics, my colleagues and I very often were required to collaborate with city councils and planning commissions. On location and zoning issues to find the right location for our client that's going to be complimentary to the community. I'm very familiar with the politics and procedures of small town government, and I think that makes me uniquely qualified. So for these reasons, I think I'm qualified and I'm prepared to fill the gap resulting from Michael's resignation. That is, of course, presuming you believe I'm the right candidate. We have several very well qualified candidates here in the room today. I will embrace and support whatever the decision the council makes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Zoom, I'm getting some texts from people on Zoom that are. Are we doing Zoom, they can't hear and they can't see.
We're good, they can't. Just turn the camera back down, but. The volume is working.
Okay, maybe they maybe they have a hard time with camera that. Thank you.
Dan Cupps here.
He was. He wanted to be back, but I don't know who else.
Jean.
This is not my forte, I'm real, so I'll be quick and simple, I think, I'm Jeannie Benjamin, I live at five 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 Harrison Street, I think I know everybody, maybe. I've lived here my whole life, I graduated from high school here, went to Michigan State, moved back. And when I moved back, I've worked in retail forever, so I worked on, my first committee was downtown business committee before it turned into the DDA. From that, I joined city council, I was on city council for a number of years. And was on ZBA planning commission. I moved out of town after. City council, when I got married and moved out of city limits, and then I was put back on the planning commission for a number of years. I resigned at that point, raised my son, and now he's away to college. And it would be interesting and fun to get back involved again, I feel like there's a lot of change that's going on and I feel like. Having had the history of living here as long as I have, I've I know a lot of people. From all walks of life, so I have a pretty clear vision of. Everybody from locals to summer to those who have just moved here. And working downtown, you can hear every. It's a pretty good sounding board and I feel like I could remain open minded enough to hear everybody's point of view. And. Do the right thing, because that's. What we're supposed to do is the right thing and not do anything motivated by any other reason. We're all serving everybody who's sitting in this room. So our purpose is to listen and follow through on what we think is right. And I think I can do that.
Okay, thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Nomination, you know.
Our standard practice is to open up a public comment as well, so you may want to do that first, okay, public comment, and then I think council discussion.
But in other, if I can make a comment, good, bad or otherwise, yes.
Hello, please, and I hope six three West Club Day. Yes, I'm hearing a lot of experience, a lot of passion, I think that's really great. But I'd kind of like to know more than seven meetings. But I'd kind of like to know, more than seven meetings, who would be willing to run in November? Think about it, because of consistency and longevity, seven meetings plus two years, it would be really nice. To have someone come that might consider running in the fall. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I have the floor?
Sure.
Um I move to open the discussion among the city council on Chip Everest for the fifth seat on city council to serve until the November election and to approve his appointment by city council vote. With Mr. Everest's strong financial background, as well as his lifetime involvement with Harvest Springs, I find him to be the best qualified individual of all ten of the very fine candidates who have applied for the empty seat on the city council. In his own words, he has a lot of company and nonprofit board experience, which encourages inclusive and thoughtful decision processes. I like that he recognizes need for inclusive dialogue. I like the fact that he is able to talk to full-time and seasonal residents and understands the necessity of being able to do so. He's been impressive in his thought process and in demonstrating the qualities he attributes to himself on the planning commission. And most importantly to me, given that this city council is um supplanting the election process with this appointment. I conducted my own unofficial straw poll among twenty residents. And when I listed the ten candidates, every person recommended Chip as the candidate they would elect if they have a chance to do so. And every menial city council has received by citizens in the past forty-eight hours supports that observation. It's been unanimous. I urge my fellow city council members to follow the lead and desires of our citizens. I also look forward to the wisdom and accumulated financial experience in negotiating the financing of our electric substation, as well as the question regarding the funding of the City Marina Building, as well as the question of moving two and a half million of our surplus monies to a credit union rather than keeping it in a bank. Thank you.
Discussion on the council.
Is there any more public comment?
Any comments? Any public comment, anybody? Very so.
Um so I guess my question under discussion here is, um do we are we gonna do the process that we did before where we dominate one person at a time and if nobody, we're gonna go through and so that person will be then eliminated rather than have a discussion of perhaps our top five candidates each?
Point of order. The motion is already on.
I understand we're discussing the motion. Are we not?
Yeah, so there's a motion a second and now there's a discussion.
This is a discussion, like is, is this the, I understand, I'm just um asking if it can, if this is the way you want to go and you think this is absolutely the only way, yes or no. Um but there are ten great candidates and I did as was suggested and, you know, came down to a top five and uh I would, it would be, I would like to have discussion on the others, but as well.
I agree with Kathy. I would like to discuss more than just one person at a time.
All right, let's discuss.
There's a motion a second, so either a vote or a motion.
A voter, a voter, a withdrawal, yes, up to you guys.
What?
I have a motion by Wendy and a second by Tom. So we can either do a roll call vote or we can withdraw this, the motions and continue on. It's up to you guys.
We should vote on a motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Reeves, second by Graham, appoint Chip Everest as an interim council member. I'll take a roll call. Kathy Macho.
No.
And Graham. Yes, Jamie Melkey.
No.
And Wendy Reed.
Yes.
So yes is a two noes motion fail.
Who whom would you like to discuss, Ken?
Um I think um you've heard I've reviewed every one of the applications several times. Um there are, I've had five people that I thought, well, everybody was qualified, I think. And um and it's to me more a matter of what we need in the city right now. I feel like we need somebody who um is a good communicator as um can see all the different opinions. Um we've got um several people that um, you know, Gary Stewart, Linda Rackwoods have all our communication background um uh know how to deal with, have dealt with people, have, you know, reached to the community and spoken with people. Um Chip does have a great qualifications. Um I think Mr. Buckner does as well. He's um uh has some background in um and I, in the analytics, which sounded very interesting to me in terms of uh understanding a lot of the issues, big issues that a city deals with. Um Mr. Leo um had, was on the council for several years and actually won uh got quite a large number of votes in last November. So I think from that standpoint, he's also um a candidate and a good candidate and and well-respected and liked in the community based on that. So I'm not sure what the best approach is, Mr. Mayor. We chatted about this a little bit, I know, last time. Is how to, you know, can we each select our top people and uh, you know, come to a consensus that way rather than one at a time, just voting on people?
I don't think I have a consensus.
So do we not try?
What do you reckon? Do you have to go one, one by one or?
That's what she's asking me not to do.
Yeah.
It's uh, it's entirely a council decision on how to proceed. I, Kathy has put out five people's names that she thinks would work. Perhaps if all did that, then there could be, maybe you would find consensus somewhere among those five people on each person has. I, that's just a, one way to proceed. But at the end, it'll have to be a motion of one person and support and a vote.
I mean, I, I just feel like we're not going, we may not come to a consensus without um without a discussion and an understanding of, or not an understanding, but uh understanding and some sort of agreement as to what's important in uh the person that we're like to have on the, you know, join us. And this is a temporary position. It's not a guarantee of um you know, obviously, this is just, we are just pointing this for four months. And to deal with these issues now. So what's the most important qualification? For all of those, we have heard from some of, you know, people with incredible qualification. So, I don't know, if anybody else has any?
You have a better idea than voting one by one?
I think we can all discuss the candidates. Um I can follow Kathy. And I think a lot of the candidates are great candidates. I personally like the fact that Bob and Gary both have um a little bit of background in local government. Um and with Gary's um bigger government. Um I think that Chip has a great financial background. Uh but I also think that the communication side where Linda and Gary really come in could be strong in going forward um to have, you know, we've heard a lot from other people that we want new people, we want a new perspective. Um to appoint somebody that's served is, sounds like is not what everybody would desire. Um so Gary is the only one that's not currently or hasn't served on any board or committee. So if people want a new perspective, I think that he would be a good person for the job.
Any comment, Wendy?
Um well, I propose Chip and both of you have listed Chip, so I think we'll just you just want further discussion on on the candidates.
I also want that.
What do you want to discuss?
The um rezoning is going to be coming before us, may come before us before the November election. So it would be difficult for me to support anybody who was in the camp of, I'll just call it the no camp. Because if you're following the past election, the overwhelming, well, not the overwhelming, but when, I think it was eighteen percent of the citizens voted to um repeal the past um. So if if we would be setting ourselves backwards if we put somebody on this board who supported the no position. And, okay. Those people that's listed.
Any comments?
Um I'm just, I'm just trying to uh uh think of the, think of the appropriate response. I, I disagree. That doesn't
I, I know, it's the elephant in the room and I just hoped it.
And that's, and that's fine. That's fine. I um what I would hope is that I'm not necessarily considering the people that I have considered because they were yes or no, or people I know or not. I read through their applications. I have talked to all of them um at different times over the years and some quite recently to get a feeling for all the strengths are different and they're all important and how someone voted on one issue, I don't think is necessarily the only um is the only factor. Certainly, we don't know, other than the people that were in a public position, how they voted on uh the repeal of four thirty-nine. So I don't know that that by itself is, is a factor. We've, I think we've come quite a way since then and with the zoning board, I think they've done a good job at listening to all opinions and going through in very great detail. Um so I I hate to make that the yes or no be the deciding factor. And I feel like that's where you're going is saying, well, this person voted no, so I can't possibly doesn't matter whether they may have changed their minds, whether they may see some things differently, whether they may accept some of the changes that have been made since then.
I also think that there's a lot more issues than just the one single issue, that if we base our decision off from a single issue, we aren't doing what's best for the community.
No, we haven't issued any questions. Keep moving. Any more comments from the board?
So you have no other comments to do about anyone else, Mr. Mayor?
I like a whole bunch of that. He is the curious one. Yeah, come away and go ahead and vote.
Do you want to accept more public comment or you don't have to?
There is public.
I mean, there's a hand up in the back.
Yes, sir. Go for it, Bill.
Just like to make a suggestion on the process. Um I thought after having viewed the, the sheet that you had, that you were gonna do a ranked choice sort of thing. If perhaps each council member chose their top three, if one could agree and then start where gets the most points and do a vote. Yeah, and I might give us the best cross-section of the overall opinion in the council.
Kind of like the campaign you're here.
Thank you. And um yeah, and I appreciate that, but I suggested a process at the last meeting and um all we could get on the agenda was an opportunity to discuss. Um I don't recall uh that the mayor was interested in a discussion or any kind of a process like that. We wanted to just vote.
That's all.
So I'm not clear how to proceed myself.
Any suggestions, Jimmer?
Well, um you know, the process that uh though I suggested is not a bad one. I, it, it wouldn't be determinative. But at least you would find some commonality on who got the most votes, for whatever, whatever that was. But it, it wouldn't hurt. Um but I think it, you know, rather than writing them down, if you just went down the list and said, here's my top three candidates, here are the top three people in my, my, my view and the order that I select, and just go through that and then have a discussion among yourselves and see if you can find a motion that would be acceptable to a majority of the council.
I have a question.
There's another question.
Yeah.
Yeah, Hemingway Hall, four nine Glen Drive. Um there are several ways you could approach this, but I would suggest that using the form, and I've seen the criteria that was on there, may not be the best way. You've talked about the kinds of characteristics that you think will make someone a complete participant, um another council person. I haven't heard, there's some of what you've discussed that's reflected. Um but there's much more. It's a much more robust perspective that I think is required than the things that are listed on that form, which is basically experiential. Doesn't really talk about philosophy, the ability to listen um and your track record in terms of, for example, fiscal capabilities, which I know Wendy brought up and I think several of you did, big issues facing the city. I would I would urge you to think more broadly than just what's on that list. And think about the kinds of things that will make the person that needs to sit there with you for the next four months a major contributor in the issues that are important.
And I, I can assure you personally that I have done that. Um and I appreciate where you're coming from. There are all kinds of different ways to evaluation and all kinds of things to look at. And those were certainly not the only issues that I've looked at and I'm, I'm suggesting that probably the other council members have done the same.
I think everybody's put this more on this, oh.
I think you're right.
My, my concern was if you force rank based upon those, you're losing some of the perspective.
I agree with that. So do I have a motion on the floor?
No.
No, I did not make a motion. I just discussed. Okay, thank you.
You'd like to make one? Hmm?
Do you like to make one? I can. Um well my question still is, and my motion would be that each of us have three and discuss.
You discuss them right here now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Needs to be in public. So now is the time.
So, all right, I support that.
Get the top three.
Sure.
I can. Um my first is Chip Everest. My second um hard to rank them after this, so I would consider Jeannie Benjamin, Janie Jenkins and Bob Buckner.
Uh, my top three would be Linda, Gary and Bob.
Yeah, I think.
Um. My top three would be Gary. Bob. And, uh. Linda.
I got three of the. Chip, Bob and Jeannie.
You said Jeannie or Janie, I want to make sure I heard you right.
Jeannie.
Jeannie Benjamin.
Yes.
You got you.
I would move to appoint Bob Buckner as. The temporary council person.
I'm certain of that.
Motion a second, there'll be a discussion, then vote.
Discussion, anybody?
Motion and a second, Kathy Mitchell.
Yes.
Jamie Melkey.
Yes.
Wendy Reed.
Yes.
Tom Graham.
Yes.
Motion, if you agree.
Well, congratulations, Bob, they, they don't have to swear, we can announce, so you can skip to the next section.
Yeah, you might as well get started immediately. Alright, Bob, please stand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution in the United States.
Constitution of this state.
Constitution of this state.
Of faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council.
Of the city of Harbor Springs.
City of Harbor Springs.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So you're lighting away loud.
Hey, Ms. Mayor, there, I do now have a city manager's report, I will have one at July twenty first meeting, um, but the next business of agenda. The next business on the agenda is to appoint a council member to the planning commission. Um. Any council member can appoint, obviously with Michael Bearman's resignation, he was on the plan. Um, Bob Buckner is on the planning commission, so as a resident, he was appointed, so you could. Choose to keep him as the council member or you can decide to, uh, rearrange roles, but. I leave that up, that's obviously a council decision, but any council member can make a motion to. Appoint someone to the light of caution, yeah.
Well, I, I have a question.
Yeah.
If we choose to. Ask Bob to be the council representative. Then the planning commission has an opening that they would need to fill through the normal process, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'm not. On her application, Jeannie Benjamin indicated that she would be interested in the planning commission, so I would nominate her as the planning commission.
No, I, I, I think first we need to appoint, ensure that. If Bob is gonna stay on, he needs to be appointed as a council member to the planning commission. And then the council can decide whether or not you want to appoint someone resident to the PC right now or take applications and at the July twenty first meeting or another meeting, appoint a resident. Fill that role.
Oh, so we couldn't, we wouldn't be able to do the resident now?
When I advertised this, it was for a council member, the application, but people lied, people did indicate that they wanted to serve on the. Which we can keep their application on file, but, um, I think we should give a fair shot to people, to residents that want to apply. If Bob, if another council member is appointed. You same thing, you have to, you know, Bob would have to resign to the planning commissioner. So therefore, so I think the first thing you need to decide is who to serve on the planning commission as your council rep. You want to keep Bob or do you want to appoint someone else?
How does Bob feel about?
I'm, I'm on the planning commission either way, so it doesn't, doesn't really matter to me, do I, do I retain?
No, no, I cannot, I cannot have two council members on.
Thanks.
I would move to make Bob the council representative to planning commission, um, so he can continue. Working with them on this. Oh, that's a second.
Motion by Melkey, second by Mitchell to have Bob Buckner serve as the council appointed member of the planning. Wendy Reed.
Yes.
Tom Graham.
Yes.
Kathy Mitchell.
Yes.
Jamie Melkey.
Yes.
Bob Buckner.
Yes. Do you want to, should I recuse myself?
It wouldn't hurt.
Vote for yourself.
You can, you can.
Yeah. I kind of like me. Yeah.
Um, he's also on ZDA, so that would also, he would have to resign from that.
Yes.
So we would have an opening on ZDA and an opening on planning commission to be filled at the July twenty first.
Yes.
Council meeting.
We do have alter, I think we do have alternate ZDA members to fill in for. So that was not as urgent, I know a decision can be made, but, uh, the planning commission would need. There's some requirements require at least six members to vote. Yes, so you want to have more members.
So I, I believe I am an alternate.
On the, on the ZDA, yeah, so we'll then find another alternate. So I, I guess I can keep, I can advertise for a resident to serve in the planning commission, we can decide that July twenty first meeting, which resident to appoint to. And for those who indicated that they want to serve in the planning commission, will apply for speaking council, I'll keep their application on file and any other, any people who applied. Last December were not appointed, I can keep them, their files still on record, I'll reach out to them to see if they still are interested in serving.
Anything that's in the area.
Yes, sir. Um, Bill Mulder, three seven two F seven, I think one more thing the council might need to decide about. Filling the vacancy on the planning commission from a resident is what is the term, is the. Are you gonna select a person for four months or are you gonna select a person for three years?
The term is to fill whatever role he resigns, so whenever his term would expire as a resident, they would fill that term.
Welcome to your new job, man.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll, we'll deal with those on July.
July twenty first.
Everybody, you're all business, yeah?
I don't.
Yes, we're done.